Okay, you should be good.
Are we ready then?
Okay. We'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the February 27th Riverdale City Planning Commission meeting, held at Riverdale City Council Room. And want to welcome the public and recognize that all of the commissioners for the Planning Commission are present. We'll move to Item B, which is public comment. We open this to members of the public to address certain needs that they would like to address the Commission on. These comments would be not including information that will be discussed in the minutes of the meeting tonight, or the agenda of the meeting tonight, but would be aside from that. And so we'd open that up if we have members of the public who would like to make comments. Seeing none, we will move to our next item on the agenda. Item C, Presentation and Reports. Ms. Marigoni, please.
One sec. I'm doing too many things at once. So this is a conditional use permit for Joe's car connection. Joe Gracie is here, representing himself.
But aren't we going to be going over the items that we went?
Yeah.
There's, as far as...
That's part of her report.
That's part of the reports? Okay.
Well, do you want to do the minutes, though?
Well, we do presentation and reports, then consent items.
Sorry.
I wonder if we were getting ahead.
I'm not the person that usually does this. He left, and I'm filling in. Be patient with me.
You're fine.
You're doing great.
We're happy.
Okay, so things I went over in the other meeting in the last week of legislative session, so we should be wrapping stuff up and know what bills have gone through and what haven't, as far as, we'll do a legislative update, once we know a little more. And some of the bills that we were worried about got sent back to committee, so they will not be moving forward, as far as we know. I don't think there's enough time, and that was the gravel pit bill. The one about the building inspectors is still moving forward. The league has been really involved in that. They don't like how it's worded, so they've been changing some of that stuff. Interviews are being conducted tomorrow to fill the community development spot, so this won't happen again. And I think that was the end.
The grand opening.
Grand opening for Bricks and Minifigs is being, has been rescheduled to Friday at 10:00, this Friday, the first.
Okay, thank you. We'll next move to Item D, Consent Items. Consideration of Meeting Minutes from February 13th, '24. The work session and regular meeting.
Just had that one changed per...
Yeah, I'll update it so we can put Kathy's name in there on the main meeting, or on the...
Work session.
It was the work session.
Everything else, I think, that's fine.
I'd like to make a motion that could approve the consent items.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Nope, I'll second it.
It's been seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
That's been unanimous. Well, next move to Action Item, excuse me, Item E, Action Items. Consideration of Conditional Use Permit Request for Joe's Car Connection Located 5030 Freeway Park Drive, Riverdale, Utah 4405 is requested by Joe Gracie. Ms. Marigoni?
Okay, so Joe Gracie is here representing Joe's car connection. I feel like we've been over this once now, but we're catching up. This is a conditional use permit for a, it's fleet sales, correct? The wording in the code is automobile, new or used sales and service, which is, falls within the general plan use for the area, just with the conditional permit. Just a reminder, Planning Commission is the approving body on this, it doesn't go to council after this, but there are additional things in the process for business licensing, site plans, things like that, that will be coming after. So this is just approval, denial, or tabling by the Planning Commission, and then that's where this part ends.
Michelle, let Steve, sorry to interrupt you, Steve just said he spaced it. Can we log him in by phone or Zoom?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, well, have you completed your presentation for that?
Let me just go over, so based on the conditional use, we're looking at health, safety, welfare issues, and impacts on the neighboring properties. He owns one of the neighboring properties. The others are roadways, commercial, or there's apartments back behind, but nothing that should be impacted by fleet sales. Now Steve's texting me.
Sorry.
This is hard to do both at the same time.
That is hard.
Sorry, guys.
No, take your technologies. No apologies.
So, yeah, unless you have any questions, or if you want to have Joe come up, he can answer some questions for you.
We want to get Steve on the phone first.
Yeah, let me get him.
Steve is a city attorney, if you guys didn't know.
Hi, madam.
Okay. Just to let you know.
It says custom automobile repair.
I'm gonna put him up by you guys.
It's just part of the code.
You're gonna what?
Yeah, that's just what it says in the code.
Okay.
I mean, that's what they're gonna do.
Not, that's not necessarily what they're gonna be doing, but that's what it says in the code.
There's microphones over here.
Do you need us to reach for your arm?
Nope. He doesn't know that's gonna work. Or do you already know it? I kind of know it. Do you want to just dial it when, when the keypad comes up?
Yeah.
The frad yet?
Not quite.
So do you have his number?
Yeah. I'm just waiting for this to boot up.
Oh.
So you have him on speed dial, huh?
I have his number in my phone, not speed dial.
Hello?
Hello?
How are we doing?
Good. You have all of us here, we're just getting ready for Mr. Gracie to come up and speak.
All right. I apologize for that. I just told Michelle this morning I'd be there, I totally spaced it off.
Glad you could join us.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gracie, we'd like to invite you up. If you would give us your name and city of residence, please.
Joe Gracie, Riverdale City.
Welcome.
Indeed.
Commissioners, any questions?
I just got one. You understand the difference, I'm sure it's been explained, between a conditional permit, use permit, and a business license?
Yes, sir.
And what you can and can't do at your facility during those different processes, as far as different, having a conditional permit, what you're allowed to do onsite versus a full-blown business permit. That's been explained and clarified to you?
Well, you're welcome to do so.
What is your understanding, as far as that goes?
A conditional use permit, I don't have an understanding of the difference.
Okay. So I think we need to explain that.
Should we have Steve chime in on this?
I think Steve should chime in on that issue, yeah.
I, I thought Michelle went over this stuff with Joe the other day, as far as what he can and can't do on the conditional use. I know we briefly touched upon it on that meeting, but it's not a green light, that's what I thought. It's not a green light to just run business as usual kind of thing, it's just a process to use to get the thing going forward.
Okay.
So...
So I do understand that.
Yeah, this is just the first step.
First step, Mike said, let's take this first step, so that's what this is.
The first step is that we give you, that you obtain the conditional use permit, then from there you have the option to pursue and continue with that with your site plan and the final site plan. Each of those require being reviewed by the Planning Commission to make sure that we're in compliance with city regulations, and this is more investigating the business itself, and how it will affect the neighbors, and will fit in with the rest of the community where it will be situated. So that's what questions we'll probably be addressing tonight, then.
Thank you.
Now, the, the request is for new and used car sales and servicing.
Not new.
Well, car sales and servicing. Will you...
Servicing.
So you won't be necessarily doing any type of servicing? This is strictly sales, is what you're doing.
Strictly sales.
So in the future, you wouldn't be having bays that would be bringing vehicles into the building and...
To repair other people's vehicles? That's like having a second wife. I'll pass on that.
I will just, I'll reiterate, maybe a question like Kent's asking, on the, on your application, on the permit, it says for automobile, new or used, sales and service.
So we had him put that on there, because that's what the use is in the code for the conditional use.
Yeah, that's the use in the code, but I just wanted to clarify whether there would be any servicing, that you intend to have servicing there or not.
Not while I'm alive.
Okay.
But that may not be much longer, but at any rate.
However, just to be aware, if, because that is in the code, and part of the conditional use permit, should the permit be granted, whether that's his intention now or not, at some future point, he could do service in that, in that, in that area, and there would be nothing we could do to stop him, as long as, as long as he was in compliance with other, you know, regulations and things like that, established by the city.
We would want to look at that, based on, you know, the hours that, if indeed that you ever moved that way, would the hours, the service would be conducted, would it interfere with, you know...
Surrounding.
Surrounding homes and properties.
Sure.
Same with like waste disposal and things like that, just to ensure it's in compliance. But right now, you're just selling used cars.
Well, I've been in business 43 years. I have a lot of experience, and my experience tells me not to get married again, I mean, to not do that.
Okay.
If you get my hint.
Yeah.
So as long as I'm existing, no.
I'm just, I just have a question. On your website, you're already advertising for your sales in Riverdale, and that it's coming, and you have the location on your website already?
We did that hoping during COVID.
It says come in 2022, and then you click on it, and it says in 2023, and COVID was 2020.
Yes, well, 2020 through 22, and that was our intention. The gal that worked for me at the time put that on the website. I don't know how to take it off, I don't know how to do any of that electronic stuff. I have hired a Cuban doctor who's good with the electronics, and he's starting to amend that. So yes, that was on there, that was the intention. We thought it would progress more quickly than it did, and it's been unfortunate that it hasn't.
So eventually, when you get your permit, and when you sell, you will be selling out of that area too, then?
I would like to be selling, well, the city of Roy has great intentions for the existing spot that we're in. They want to build a millennial paradise with their high-rise apartments, and theaters, and coffee shops, and what they're doing. So they want us gone from Roy.
Oh, so you're moving your business from Roy to your Riverdale spot?
When I absolutely have to, yes. And Roy, I fought Roy, and you don't fight City Hall and win. And so I gave up and bought this property with the intention of moving, and then the state decided to tear all the road up, and that has not made it easy. In fact, it's been very difficult. I have accommodated the city of Riverdale by allowing the company that is installing the gas line to use the property I purchased behind this, and there's been a lot of equipment on there that's given people consternation. I thought I was helping the city of Riverdale, so they could put their equipment there, so they could install your gas line. But I understand some have been upset by that. My intentions were to help. And they said they would level the ground, and make it cleaner, and they did. So...
Okay.
Maybe that's too much information.
That's okay.
Nope.
Appreciate it.
So once you get your license, then you will be selling out of Riverdale, right?
I would like to, if I can find someone to help me in sales. I've lost, I can't get anybody that wants to work anymore.
That's a difficult economy right now.
It's, it's been difficult for some time, yeah. So this old boy is selling, in the meantime. So yes, to answer your question, sorry.
Do you, so once you work with Public Works and get towards your business license, are you wanting to start operating out of Riverdale sooner than later?
Well, the goalposts have been moved by Public Works, and so my intention is yes, but they keep moving the goalposts, so as soon as we're able to, yes.
Will you explain what's the goalpost they're moving? You talking about what they're requiring of you, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it has been indistinct and changes. And so I would like it to be distinct, and so I can just do it. Although we have had deaths, we have had contractors that have left, we can't get people, yes, we'll do it, engineers will do it, six months later, they do it. So it's, it's very difficult to get anything done. I wish I could do it myself, at one time I could, but no more. So yes, we're trying. I'm trying.
Okay, Commissioners, any further questions?
How about any type of disposal that needs to be, is any regulated hazardous waste material in your process at all, on site?
Oil.
Oil? Yeah, anything of that nature.
They don't change oil, I have it done elsewhere.
Nothing's collected and stored onsite of hazardous material in the, in the business or in your process?
No, no, not in the sales, no, not at all.
Any late night work, late night hours?
I go to sleep at 6:30, this is past my bedtime, to be honest. I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, that's my time clock on my body, so...
Revving, revving engines or making noise for the neighbors or anything like that, you're...
That would irritate me, I would come out and be, I'm of that age where those things bother me. I'll be the complainer.
Okay.
No further questions, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Brooks, do you have anything?
I would like to maybe address a couple of things that I'm aware of.
Can you pull the microphone down?
Hang on, one minute.
That's okay, Mr. Brooks.
Okay, now try Steve.
Just, just a couple of things, and again, I don't know that this is a gang killer, but there are some issues with the property, and that's how this whole thing started. Joe came in and put his own, I don't even know what it's called, his detention base in the end, but it wasn't engineered or properly constructed, and so that's a big issue, we've got to have that taken care of. There's a rock wall behind the building that likewise wasn't engineered. Some of these things could get signed off on, if you brought people in to take care of that. And then another factor, which you sort of touched upon a little bit there, is the potential for soil contamination, and so those are all issues that we got to look at. Even, even just the storage of cars can present a problem on that, so these all have to be resolved at some point in time, and as far as I'm aware, I don't know what's changed, I mean, those were the same three things primarily that Sean had brought up, our Public Works Director, in our initial meeting, and that hasn't changed. None of that's been resolved, and none of it's, it's still there, it's just like it was probably a year ago, or whenever we met. We did meet with an engineering firm that at the time was representing Joe, and we explained all this stuff to them, which they all agreed and recognized that that needs to be taken care of, but we've never heard anything more since then. So I don't know what moved, I mean, that was what was presented in the first meeting we had, and those things still exist today, so at some point in time, that's got to get taken care of before we can allow, you know, it's not down where it's paved, it's more the hillside part, and I know Joe brought some rock in and stuff to allow parking, but that's, we've still got to look at that, that can't just take place like that without knowing that it's not going to contaminate soil, so. And then to run off the drainage basin that's there, that's got to be engineered and done correctly. It, it could be closed now, we don't know, but until an engineering firm comes in and looks at it, and the same thing with the rock wall, we have no idea. And so as a Public Works Department, Sean can't sign off on that till he knows more.
But he really can't do anything until he has a conditional use permit, isn't that correct?
Right, right, and that was kind of the intent, to at least get this started, so he can start moving on those things.
And so all of those things would, would pretty well be addressed with the proposal and with the final site plan, wouldn't they?
Exactly, or conditions that you set out in this, because you can set those conditions as part of your approval, so that's what I would just be aware of that, and make sure that, you know, he complies with all the local and state codes and zoning laws that are in place.
Okay, thank you.
So I think right now, as far as a conditional use permit, what you're using the property for, that you're using that property to sell cars.
I'm using it for storage currently.
Currently, yes.
Because I have overflow.
Yes, but what you want the conditional use permit for is for sales.
Correct.
Which fits within the city code and zoning for that area, and isn't going to cause any kind of disturbance for the surrounding areas. So, and then the issues that Steve was talking about, that we have here, those will need to be addressed later, when you come back with a site plan, we'll need to make sure that those are addressed before we move farther, so that you can get your building permit. And before business is conducted onsite. Right.
Right. Right.
So we just want to make sure, we've just had some issues before, where we've passed through the conditional use permit, and then people assume that they can start doing business there, and we want to make sure that you understand that you're not able to sell any cars, or do business onsite, do anything besides storage, until you actually have your business license from the city. We just want to make sure that that's understood.
Thank you. Perfectly clear on, if I may, on one of the issues that Steve brought up, I submitted the engineering for the rock behind the building this morning.
Oh, perfect.
From an engineering firm that did it after the fact, because I hired a rock guy, and he installed it, and then it was brought up that it wasn't engineered, because it's too tall. So it took six months for the engineering firm to respond, there's a, she printed it all out, you scanned it and sent it over to...
Sent it to Sean, yeah.
To Sean. So Sean has that, and it approves that rock. So I imagine you have to also give it to someone else and see what they say, but that's been done. And I won't address the other thing, because it's, there's been a, we'll resolve it.
We'll get there.
Well, and really, part of, that's part of the conditional use permit allows, it allows you to then move forward with, with those things that, that you need to do in order to be able to have your site plan approved and your business license approved.
Glad to do that.
So that, that basically, you know, is, is what the first step is, getting that conditional use permit.
Thank you.
And it is how, what Commissioner Nolan said, is we've had other people think that this, this is, this conditional use is approved, so you can do business tomorrow, and that isn't, that's not the case.
Perfectly clear. I wouldn't be able to do it anyway, it's just me. But it's clear.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I, I move that we approve the conditional use permit for Joe's car connection, with the conditions that all, that, you know, before moving forward, that it, he addresses the issues with the stormwater, paving, paved parking, rock retaining wall, and hillside, and any other issues that, that city staff needs to have taken care of at that time as well. And with the, also with the findings that this type of business is compatible with the businesses that are in the area, and do not, will not be a hazard to health and safety of the residents in the area.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Brooks, is there anything we need to add, or?
No, I think that pretty much summarizes it well there, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Kathy's second.
Kathy's seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Marigoni, would you please poll the Commissioners?
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nye?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stires?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And yes.
That has passed. Thank you, Mr. Gracie.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll now move on to Action Item E2. Consideration of Conditional Use Permit Request for Pipe Dream Designs LLC Located 4042 Pacific Avenue Number 102, Riverdale, Utah, as requested by Jake Mackley. Ms. Marigoni?
I'm gonna try to be a little more prepared on this one.
You're fine.
You're fine. So Jake Mackley has a business called Pipe Dream Design LLC, right? He's submitted the conditional use permit for custom manufacturing and retail sales business at 4042 Pacific Avenue 102. This is the same building that Alpha Customs is in, over by Buckway Full Ring, the front one on Pacific Avenue. All of the affected parcels are owned in Regional Commercial C3, and it fits within the code. General plan use is commercial with mixed-use residential component as an option, there's no residential next to it. And, yeah, it does fit within the C3 zone.
Okay, Mr. Mackley, we'd invite you to the stand, and if you would introduce yourself and your city of residence, please.
Hey, my name's Jake Mackley, and I'm a resident of Harrisville.
Okay, Commissioners, questions for Mr. Mackley?
Can you tell me a little more about your process on the CO2, what you're going to do with that CO2, and if you need special equipment and accommodations to have that in the building?
So it's CO2 laser, so the CO2 is just what generates the laser beam, so it's not, not actually consuming any CO2. So it's just in a glass tube, so if it were to break, it would just be, you know, a couple cubic feet of CO2, but when you're actually cutting, there's no CO2 gases used. cutting, there's no CO2 gases used.
Do you feel like you need an alarm system in there to monitor CO2 at any given time when you're even, maybe not even at work?
No, no. If it were, there's no supply of CO2. It's just a very small volume inside a glass tube. So, it's not, in this industry of CO2 lasers, there's never any safety concern with CO2 leakage. So, I mean, not something that I'm worried about. We're just talking about, you know, less than a couple cubic feet.
How much do you have stored on site at any given time?
You don't store any. If the tube were to break or wear out, you just order a new one.
So, it's just like one tube in the shop at any given time?
Yep. There's just a tube inside the laser. It's what generates the laser beam. So, it's not a consumable. So...
Out of curiosity, what do you do with that? What do you use that for?
It's for, like, engraving or cutting, like, wood or fabric. A lot of, it's, it's a hobby machine, you know? People put them in their garages, and they do, they can cut, like, projects. I use it for cutting, like, templates and chigs and some fabric, things like that. So, it's common in people's garages. It's actually in my garage right now. So, it's not like, it's not an industrial laser machine.
Gotcha. Are you finished, Ashley?
I am.
Okay. Are, there was some mention of you using 3D printers. Do you have 3D printers that you'll use on site?
Yeah, that's mostly for just designing and engineering.
Okay.
Those are also machines that don't, I mean, you can have it in your desk or in your, on your desk or in your bedroom. There's nothing.
I know with some 3D printing machines, if you use specific material with them, you do have to have them enclosed because of things that they will emit into the air. Do you, what do you use? What kind of types of material do you use?
It's an FDM printer, so just the common types. There's PLA, PETG, ASA, ABS, nylon. The enclosures are mainly for keeping the heat in, so the parts don't warp. But there are some that have a carbon filter in them, so it can circulate the air within the printer, keep the air a little bit cleaner.
So, yours, you don't need to be concerned with anything that it emits into the air?
No. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, like, have it in a closet and share an office with it or something, you know? But in a, inside of a shop, there's no concern on the amount of, if you're printing, it's usually ABS or ASA that you can, it's not really that toxic, but if you're, like, in an enclosed space with it for a long period of time, then you can become a little bit sick. But I've been working with these. They're common in engineering, and I've never had any issue. I've had them in my office all the time, so...
Okay.
Can you just kind of tell us what kind of things, projects you do?
So, it's pretty broad, because it's kind of a job shop where I work in multiple industries. But some examples are assembly of automotive products, like, oh, actually, part of the reason I'm going to be in this place is because I will be doing work for Alpha Customs. I'll be building their tops that they're putting on their vehicles. So, I'll be just assembling aluminum parts with rivets and glue. And then, also do, could build wood furniture, metal signs for businesses, anything that needs to be manufactured, like laser cutting, CNC machining, forming, I outsource it. And then, I'd bring it in just for final assembly. And then, either the customer would come pick it up, or I would ship it to the customer. So, there could be some e-commerce, like, some small items that are assembled or built and then sold online. So, I'm mostly just trying to figure out what, let me light you guys all the different types of things I could be doing there, just to make sure there's no issues with it.
So, you don't have customers coming in and looking at things, just, you, they're all pre-ordered?
Yeah, it's kind of like a job shop where either, it's either e-commerce where it's getting sold online, or I'm communicating with customers and then building their product, and then either they're picking it up or I'm shipping it to them. But there won't be any, like, product on display for sale for customers to just walk in and buy.
Okay. So, you're not expecting a lot of foot traffic then either? Just every once in a while, someone will come to pick something up?
Yeah.
So, parking is not a concern?
No.
Are you in business with Alpha Customs?
I've done design work for them, but I'm not, like, contract work, basically.
So, raw materials, items that you have would be able to fit within your space there? You wouldn't be storing wood outside of the building or anything like that?
Nothing, nothing would be stored.
And then, you mentioned that you would be doing some welding. Is that gas welding or electrical, electric arc welding?
Yeah, it'd be electric arc welding. It would be small quantities. Like, if there's large amounts of welding, I would outsource it. But sometimes I need to prototype or do, like, a small project. That's when I would need to weld.
Some of these, even with the small amount of welding and with the, you know, what, what you, how you described the, the 3D printing, I'm sure that ventilation will be a requirement moving forward. Is that, is that an issue in the, in the space that you're in? Is there ventilation for those types of, of projects?
Yeah, there are, there are ducts on the, on the roof.
And ventilation fans and things like that?
Well, my laser would actually have ventilation in it, so that's one way that I can ventilate. I would, that will be connected to the ducts in the roof and...
But like, your 3D printer, your welding, is there general ventilation for those types of things?
Essentially, I could run a vent fan if I needed to and ventilate the whole space.
Again, I don't, I don't know what the requirements are. I'm sure that, that the city staff will give you those requirements, but I can't imagine that there wouldn't be ventilation requirements, you know, along with that. Just be aware.
Okay.
What, what hours are you planning on operating there?
Just regular, you know, working hours.
Eight to five-ish?
Yeah.
What type of supplies would you be putting down the sewer? Anything special?
No, really nothing.
No chemicals in the process?
And then, the waste that's generated, because I'm sure you'll have scrap material, but that's, is it, is there a large amount of waste that comes from 3D printing or...
No.
This construction?
Waste will be very small, mostly like packaging from receiving things in the mail and, you know, a little bit of, like, wood scrap here and there. The metal that I get will mostly be pre-made, so it'll just be assemblies, so there won't, there won't be any waste on most of the metal products. So, mostly just a dumpster would be fine.
Your business is independent of your neighbors, totally?
Yep.
It's only contracted. It's not, without Alpha Customs, it, you're not in business with them.
No, it's just, uh, contract work. So, I'll be doing business with other customers as well.
Mr. Brooks, do you have anything?
I mean, not necessarily. I do, I mean, just based on what he said, and this is probably something you guys would bring up, but I would be concerned that, you know, we, we made sure that we got our fire inspector and building inspector over there just to, even though it is a conditional use permit, the nature of this probably would require both of those to get a good look at not only the building, but the operation, both, just because of the safety factor involved, I think. But I couldn't hear a lot of what he said. I didn't hear it that well, but I still think that it would apply, given what, what little I did hear of it, so...
So, I also have his license, or his business license application. He did that first, then we found out he needed the conditional use. And, yeah, and the fire and building will, will go along with the business, so we'll get them in there before anything is licensed.
Okay. Yeah, I just wouldn't want somebody getting hurt in the meantime. And so, that's something we got to make sure gets done.
So, I'm sure you heard us, Mr. Mackley, tell the previous gentleman that if we approve your conditional use, you know that's not to be doing business tomorrow out of there. You've got to go through the proper channels with the staff and, and all the, and the business license protocols to then do, start doing business.
So, my question is, do I get the inspections, like, before I move in, or does that have to come after I've moved in?
So, with the business licensing, once the conditional use permit is issued, I would work with you, and you would be scheduling, you can't move in, you can get your stuff ready. You know, they want to see how things are set up and all of that stuff. So, you'll work with fire, and you'll work with building. I'll give you their phone numbers, and you'll just communicate back and forth with them when you're ready for the inspection and what they want you to have done before they come in. That's standard with every business. So, you can't just move in and start doing stuff, but you can start setting up and being in communication with them while, you know, you're getting ready to sell.
But you can't be doing any business until you have your business license.
It'll just be a challenge unless we move quickly, because I can't really move in and then not do business, because I won't be able to survive. But so, as long as we can do it quickly.
Building and fire both are really quick with their inspections. So, as long as you don't have a lot of problems and you're doing what, you know, they are requiring, you'll be, no time. It's, it's fine.
Yeah, this is, this would be the gateway to be able to move forward, get things established, set up your, your booths and your stations to be able to do all of the work, have the city inspect to say, yes, this is in compliance. The business license comes, and you're off to the races.
Right. We just want you to know, you can, you can set up, but you can't be doing business until you have a business license and it's been cleared by all departments. And they do, we do want you to do business in Riverdale. We're glad you're here. Please know that. We just want you to know, it's not, you can't start doing business tomorrow. You have to have your business license in hand before any business comes out of that.
Unfortunately, there have been those who have tread the bridge before you that have caused us to take these types of steps to make sure that we're clear in explaining what's expected, so that there aren't, like Mr. Gracie was saying, you don't feel like we're moving the goalposts on you every time. We want this to be smooth and fluid, and we want to welcome you to the city, given that we get that approved, so...
We want you to have a good experience. We, we don't want you to have a misunderstanding and then end up having fines imposed by the city or anything like that. We want you to move through the process.
We want you to love Riverdale as much as we all do.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any more questions, Commissioners?
No, I'll make a motion to approve. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Any stipulations or facts?
So, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request for Pipe Dream Design LLC located at 4042 Pacific Avenue, number 102, Riverdale, Utah, 84405, as requested by Jake Mackley, with, with the exception, knowing that you have got to go through Public Works and Fire and Code Enforcement to make sure that all things are, and all staff is covered, that you guys work together to create this.
I'll second.
Steve, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that sums it up.
Okay, before we have the second, we'll just pause on that. Any discussion on the motion? Okay?
I think I understand what he is saying. He can't move everything out of his garage and into the new position and not have business for a month or so. Is that not what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And when you set everything up in a new business, that means your garage is going to be empty.
Yep.
So, you need to move fairly quickly so that we don't cause you to be...
And we'll work with you.
Yeah, we'll work with you. Because we don't want, we don't want you to be unemployed either.
No.
We under, I understand your concern.
I appreciate it.
And if you move quickly and work closely, it will happen quickly.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay. And so, does your second still stand?
My second still stands.
Okay. Ms. Marigoni, would you please poll the Commission?
Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Spires?
Yes.
Commissioner Poulsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Nye?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
All right, that's been unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck, have fun.
Patient with us, we'll be patient with you.
Exactly. Wise, wise words.
We wish you the very best.
I will email you your next steps tomorrow.
Okay, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
All right. We'll next, next move on to Item F, comments from the Planning Commission and city staff. Do we have any comments that would like to be raised tonight?
Steve, any comments from you?
Um, no, other than I thought you guys did a good job, so, and I apologize for my absence.
We appreciate you dialing in.
Yes, we do.
I'll tell you what I think tomorrow.
I missed that one.
She said she'd tell you what she thinks tomorrow.
Before or after her interview?
Probably after.
It'll be after, for sure.
If you're watching, I'm sure you already know what I think.
Be tomorrow, too, sister.
Good luck on your interviews tomorrow.
And Michelle's done a great job, Steve, on the record. Michelle has done a fantastic job.
A lot to juggle.
She has. She's juggling like crazy.
Double duty.
So, thanks, we appreciate you.
She's in a really uncomfortable position, because I really don't want to lose her where she's already at.
Yeah, we don't either.
So, now you'll know, if you don't get the job.
I think we'll be free either way. Thank goodness. We certainly don't want to lose her.
No, we don't.
We'll see how it goes.
Hi. Will be interesting. Hopefully, we hear something soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
It's always unanimous.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Oh, we just hung up on him.
You said, "Thanks, Steve." You didn't make any comments back, so? We're done.